Hello everyone, a very good morning to you all. I am Pritha Pandey, Professor at DME Media School. I welcome you all to the second special session of International Academy Conference, live on the digital platform called Issues of Community Agenda and News #ConferenceForChange, hosted by DME Media School, Delhi Metroport Education Noida, a premier institute of learning, affiliated to Burugon University, Dwarkar in collaboration with Dickens University, Melbourne, Australia. Our knowledge partners are Admas University Kolkata, K R Mangalam University Gurubram, Public Christian Society of India, Delhi Chapter, and our media partner is The Politicites. The international conference, popularly known as IC3, is not only the world's first 10-day academy conference, it is also third in the trilogy of conferences with the same name IC1 and IC2, representing a galaxy of media experts and scholars from across four continents, America, Europe, Australia and Asia. For the people who have joined recently, here are some of the highlights of the conference. There are overall 29 sessions spanning 10 days, beginning June 21, including 14 technical sessions, three panel discussions, three preliminary discussions, two, sorry, three master classes and two special sessions. Overall, 158 papers have been presented, 203 abstracts, 141 papers published with 174 authors, in six books, five in English and one in Hindi. Now let's have a glimpse of the books. Another note for the future of this conference is that it is being streamed live on Facebook and YouTube simultaneously. One can also join IC3 through LinkedIn, which has more than 500 followers, as academicians, industry and media experts. Today's session, Critiquing COVID-19 Disaster Through Communication and Media Lens, is the most relevant topic of the day as the world is struggling to come out of the pandemic of COVID-19. To chair the session, we have a very distinguished and renowned personality, Professor Jashri Jaitwanie. Ma'am, it's a great honour and a privilege to introduce one's own mentor and guru. For she doesn't need any introduction, the name is an introduction itself, and words would be few to define the persona which is so well-known nationally and internationally. Professor Jashri Jaitwanie has been a lead communication expert for many international conferences, taken on behalf of UNESCO, UNICEF, UNFPA, World Health Organization, USA among others. She is also on the Board of Studies of several central and state universities. In her long career, she has designed and anchored more than 150 training programs in the areas of corporate communication, advertising, social marketing, disaster communication and corporate social responsibility. She has been a visiting faculty to many coveted organizations, including National Judicial Academy, Bhopal and the Lal Bhadu Shastri National Academy of Administration, Masuri, Orinan Staff College, Naakul, Power Management Institute, besides visiting many colleges and universities. Professor Jaitwanie has authored and co-authored many books, including When India Votes, Social Sector Communication, Corporate Communication, Public relations Management and Advertising Management. Ma'am has also contributed to Sage and Psychopedia on Corporate Reputation and has many chapters in many books. Professor Jaitwanie is a recipient of Exceptional Women of Excellence Award by Women Economic Forum, Sahayog Sahyadri Durgashean Award on Leadership in Mass Communication Teaching. She has also received Best Professor Award by World Education Congress and the Leadership Award in PR Academics from PRSI. Currently, she is a Senior ICSSR Research Fellow based at ISIB. Good morning ma'am and a very warm welcome to you to IC3 International Conference Special Session 2 on Critiquing COVID-19 Disaster Through Communication and Media Lens. To moderate the session, we have Professor Amrit Saxena, Dean, DME Media School and Director, DME Studios and Production. Sir is an accomplished media professional, researcher, author, anchor and political analyst. He has played a long inning in active journalism, having association with groups like the Pioneer and the Amrit Bazaar Bhaktika. He has worked as correspondent for the first ever TV Hindi news magazine Parak on Durgasheen. He has been anchoring the highly rated program of AIRF and Gold Market Muntar for close to two decades now. Professor Saxena has extensive international exposure. He has visited countries like China, Australia, US, Dubai, Egypt, Spain and France as part of his academic endeavors. He is a member of International Association of Media and Communication Research, IAMCR. In 2019, he made a presentation on Innovation in Journalism Education as the sole representative of Asia in World Journalism Education Congress in Paris. I welcome you too sir. The session will be followed by question and answers and the participants are requested to use chat box for their questions. Also participants are requested to fill the feedback form through the link provided in the chat box at the end of the session. I now request Professor Amrit Saxena to welcome Professor Jaitwanie and introduce the session. Over to you sir.
Thank you Krishna Pandeyji. Thank you Professor Jaitwanie, she has always been a source of inspiration to me personally and for the institute wherever I am working. And since the time I am with the DME, she has been continuously providing the kind of support which is desired always, whether it comes to organizing the faculty development program or any other academic venture, she is always there. And when we were planning the IC3 in March in the face-to-face mode that time, she was planning to have a full-fledged panel discussion but that could not happen this time. Since we are organizing the whole conference on the digital mode, so it has its limitations. But despite this, I was very eager that at least we are benefited by her knowledge and expertise. So she finally agreed to speak on a topic which is very, very contemporary, which is very relevant. We all are facing the brunt of COVID-19 and it's now more than three months. Nobody knows how much more time we will be facing its consequences. So we have to understand the way the COVID-19 has been covered in media and there are different versions on this. Some people feel that electronic media has done a very good job as far as the coverage of COVID-19 is concerned and providing the all vital information. But then there is another version on this that this, there are pitfalls and the way the stories are being delivered are not in the right earnest and are not actually delivering the good to the society. And what to say of the television channels, there is a whole digital media and the digital media use has increased many, many fold these days. I mean to the extent we are holding the entire 10-day conference on the digital media. So the news which is coming through the digital media is consumed both. Is believed more despite whatever apprehensions, we all as academic people have, whether some news is to be accepted as it is or there has to be a check verification check of all the, but then common people accept. And there is a lot of such information or rather I should say, this information isn't circulation about the health aspect, about the scientific aspect of COVID-19. And so people will find it hard to believe which information is correct. People are mostly confused about that and the way the government of India has handled this all, the information dissemination officially by the government of India, that has always been having its shortcomings and lot of time contradictory information is being disseminated by different agencies of the government, whether we talk about the health ministry or we refer to any communication which is being done by Indian Council of Medical Research, ICMR and then at the different state governments disseminate their own information which is sometimes not in harmony with the information which would have been given by the central government. There is also ambiguity between whatever information is officially available in the country and the international agencies, particularly the World Health Organization. So ICMR is saying something else, WHO is saying something else. And then there are claims, tall claims made by leaders like Donald Trump, wherein they suggest a certain cure, certain medicine. So obviously we all live in a global world. So if something is being said by a country like US or by its president, we believe that. But then the next moment we find that our own Prime Minister Narin Modi is saying something else. So as far as those whole communication and then this on the media spectrum, the things are not very, very clear. And I believe that today's lecture of Professor Jaitwanie will throw light on all such aspects and we will be in a comfortable position to understand that how this communication has been done or is being done and what is to be believed, what is not to be believed. So I mean all relevant aspect, I believe she might be touching upon which will be to the benefit of us all. So I will make a request to Professor Jashri Jaitwanie to please start with her presentation.
Thank you so much Amritish and Krishna for very, very indulgent introduction. It's always a pleasure to be working with you. It has been long, almost two decades we have been working together where we have been. And thank you so much for inviting me. Now before, I have made some PPT points but I thought before we run the PPT formally, I could just give a few remarks, the opening remarks to set the tone for today's presentation. Now disasters, crises are the most dreaded. No life is without a crisis, disaster is a personal life, whether it's national life, societal life, international. Disaster like Sermis twins, this is why that, we don't understand them and that is where the problem lies. I have been tracking many disasters, many crises for over almost 30 years but this current disaster, COVID-19, is like an enigma, not only to a common person, to researchers, to, even people who are dealing with that, even the medical fraternity. And it's not going to go away very soon. There are different kind of versions as Amrit said, that is what makes it more difficult. So and also communication is the most important ingredient in disaster management. Once a disaster happens, you cannot reverse it. The only thing you can do is probably manage it and that is what makes it difficult. And any disaster of any kind breaks the status quo. Things are not the same once a disaster happens. So let us look at how this COVID-19 entered the country, what all did we do, where we faulted, what are the faults lies and what are the lessons learnt? So Krishna, we can start the PPT and hello Sushmita.
Good morning ma'am, I read blessings always.
Always.
Thank you, welcome ma'am.
So could we start the PPT Krishna?
Yes ma'am, just give me two minutes.
Would you like to put it on this slide mode? Yeah, yes. So the subject of discussion today is analyzing COVID-19 disaster through the media and communication lens. Okay, so when I say media and communication, obviously media is supposed to be independent. They are supposed to be watchdogs in a society, work as a conduit between the authorities and the general public. And communication generally comes from the disaster managers. It can be the government, it can be the authorities in charge of handling the disaster. So we shall be looking at both from the supply side of information, which is the authorities and the demand side of information on disaster, COVID-19. So biological disasters such as COVID-19, penalties are unprecedented but with increased research and understanding, they can be contained. The impact varies depending on the level of preparedness, resources and resilience. But one has seen that the moment we knew about COVID-19, some of you have seen the Frankenstein movies, you know the kind of power that guy had. So this COVID-19, the new skill, small, you know, microbe is so powerful that when we talk to doctors who are handling, they say the way it attacks the lungs, they have never seen it in life. Before he said they are able to reach it, it completely makes a seam of your lungs. And when you see that the first time we got to know about COVID-19 was in January end, I think 30th January was the first case in India. But the preparedness was seen or you know, the problem was seen from the perspective of handling it only from the March onwards. So in between January end of course, the 30th, February and March, the 50 days golden period to my mind was lost. If we had prepared better in that those 50 days, somehow there was a wishful thinking that India may not have that kind of, you know, problem as America or the Europe was facing. But when you have to understand that this trends of COVID differ from country to country and also that was a peak time in America and USA and also China. The peak is just to start in India. So when somebody says compare only, you know, so many people dead, look at number of people, we are 1.3 billion and therefore lost so many people, you know, they have started flattening their curve. Our curve is spiking, now this huge spike. So you have to understand the communication from various perspectives and depending on where it is coming from. Next, next Krishna. So look at, these are the figures which I took on 19th June. So almost now it's 1 crore people all over the world are infected and there are 46, 4.66 lakh people who are dead. But if you see almost little more, more than 50% people are also recovered also, which means that you know the people with comorbidity are more susceptible to COVID than the people who are young. But one has to realize, I was watching a very interesting program yesterday. People just don't have COVID, they have many other diseases like threatening diseases also. So the story was that whenever these people with other mobilities were sent to the hospitals and they were not taking, getting the critical care. And many people have died for want of critical care. So where would you ascribe those deaths to? So the argument was that at least add one-third more deaths as COVID deaths because you know those people died because there was no critical treatment available to them. And also, generally no post-mortem done after somebody dies. So unofficially, when you talk to doctors, not only here, elsewhere in the USA, in the Europe, they say that many people who come to the hospitals and they are not, even before they are given any treatment, they die, they are not counted. So the figures could be little more than the official figures tell you. Next please. Now this has been designated as pandemic by the WHO and as Amrit also said, there are different kinds of narratives coming. President Trump has alleged WHO for being China-centric and he has been threatening to withdraw from WHO. Now imagine if America withdraws, which is the giver of the maximum funds, what is going to happen to an international organization like this, so it doesn't happen. Next. Now as of now, now we have to problematize a problem, an issue to understand what, when and who, most importantly, why and how to handle it. So I've tried to problematize COVID-19. As of now, there is no drug or vaccine that can combat the virus, remember point number one. Before it reaches the people and the prognosis is whatever people might say, but the prognosis is that it's going to take not less than 16 to 18 months before a drug comes and after that the human trial might take some more time. And the prognosis is that by the time it reaches the last mile, we have 7.6 billion people in the world, it might take a good three years to reach the last person. So it's not going to come anytime soon. There are a lot of news here and there that you know some drugs are already there. We also had a drug, Coronel from the Patanjali. But I mean how interestingly things have played. I'm sure a lot of people who have joined this webinar are communicators. So understand how communication works. Media is supposed to be the conduit, supposed to disseminate of information. I remember three days ago Baba Ramdev was on a number of channels telling about what he has been able to achieve. And you know media fortunately, unfortunately is event-driven and is episodic. So we thought something was coming. Next day, we saw that Baba Ramdev and other people were holding a press conference and presenting Coronel. Third day and we found that when the government of India, the concern ministry, probably ICMR got to know. So the question was that without the scientific base, without even informing them or getting it corrected or getting it vetted, how could you launch a Coronel? Coronel, which means that the moment you take it, Corona is going to be nil. So the same, you know, channels had to change the narrative and say that but then this should have been done. And then the guy, the government guy came and said that you know, a few days, it was June itself, when there was a request for a license for a cuff syrup or something like a mild cuff syrup and also for boosting immunity, they had no idea that they were launching something which they promised would, you know, cure coronavirus. So you have to realize that media has a very important role to play. You just can't be event-driven. I know that the way media functions, the very idea of doing something immediately, the breaking news, it doesn't give you any time and you're not researchers. But always take something, the pinch of salt will come about media behavior later. See the country like India, the millions live in abject poverty, where the density of population is so high. Large families live in small dwellings. So three things which they are saying are important before a vaccine is there, social distancing, wearing a face mask and washing of hands. Imagine a country where even drinking water is not available, portable water is not there. People don't have enough to eat, they live in shanties, they live in small, you know, slums. Where, how can they organize, you know, all these three things is a big, big question mark. Easier said than done. So what is that is expected of us when we problematize the Corona, 19 coronavirus? Adopting a new behavior. It takes a long time to forget an old behavior, adopt a new behavior but all sudden done. At least the people in the cities, people in the towns, they have started, many have started wearing masks. But then you can't be wearing the same mask again and again. It's supposed to be some masks are disposable, I find on television when they show the narrative, they are wearing those masks, they picked them from the chemist, they have to be thrown after six hours. And if you are wearing some other masks, you know, the cotton mask, they are supposed to be clean. So it's a huge, huge, huge expectation of adopting a new behavior. Change please. So the other issue which we, you know, pick up from the Corona, the issue, as factories, offices, markets remain closed for weeks and months together, millions of people have lost their jobs, the stock markets have tamped and the economies of all the countries affected with virus have faced unprecedented effect. People are talking about in 1930s economic depression but looks worse than that because you know when disasters come, they come, they are there for some time then they go away. And we really do not know when is COVID going to go away. And people are talking about there could be some more viruses. We have to be ready for and probably change the behavior, the earlier the better. So what is the how of getting over this is getting them back on their feet. People have adopted new behavior, people who have lost their jobs. Just before I came to webinar, I was looking at a very interesting program in TV, the Dabba Wala's in Mumbai, there are 1 lakh 25,000 of them who deliver food, lunch to the people in their offices. Imagine for the last three months, they have not been able to do. These are the people who earn every day, they eat every day. I mean they don't have much money in their banks or in the pockets to sustain for long. They have sustained for some time, the story was, some have lost the coronavirus and others are now requesting the government to at least give them a penny. And imagine they are not asking for sky or the star, they said just give us 2,000 rupees per family, we'll be able to at least, you know, make both ends meet. Imagine the kind of, the problem, the predicaments, different communities, different people are facing. I'll come to media later, but these are the facts of life which COVID has put us into. Next please. So this excessive information overload on the subject, both in the classic and new media, bringing stories of suffering, inadequacy, apathy as also of empowerment, human greed and also empathy. The internet has millions of sites in the issue but not all these sites offer credible information. Fake news, speculation, humor mongering, blame game, jokes abound on this dreaded disease. So what is, we are picking up from this, discretion and action are required. Don't pick up anything and believe what is there. There are some people who are out there to do the mischief. You're seeing how Twitter has become a handle for playing football among the adversaries. So as somebody who is, everybody is, you know, facing COVID crisis, the rich and the poor, at least there has been a level playing field. When disasters come, they don't differentiate between rich and poor. Except that the people on the fringes, they are the ones who bear the worst brunt. And people who are, you know, vulnerable, women, children, the non-human agencies, the cattle, the pets, the street dogs, the street, you know, animals, the flora and fauna, the water bodies, nobody talks about them. So if you see, it's not just the human beings who are suffering, I think the whole universe is suffering once you are disaster of this magnitude and this timeliness. Next please. So understanding crisis communication, what is supposed to discuss today, Booz and others say that they define crisis as exchange of risk-relevant safety information during emergency situation. To me, it's very, very, it's very narrow, you know, definition. Exchange of risk-relevant safety information gives you a kind of top, you know, bottom information and it's not communication that you are just trying to inform the people. The European Centre for Disease Prevention and Control, ECDC, in 13, have defined it better and made it little more, you know, relevant and also more elaborate. So they define crisis communication as what is known and not known about the current situation or a condition, for example, is magnitude, immediacy, duration, control, cause, blame, consequences. As Amrit also said that, the narratives are coming from all over. And you find at the end of the day, are we really enlightened about, you know, what is coming from various stakeholders? People who are stakes in this crisis, certainly not. A person, an average person who watches TV, I have heard people saying, you have stopped watching TV, the news because it becomes, makes us so morbid, we are so distressed when we watch TV. But there are different kinds of perspectives and you find in different channels, different, at different time, the same perspectives change because something new has come from somebody else. So the big question is, do media, media make us enlightened or they confuse us? I'll leave it to you to think about it. Let's, next please. Now I feel, as I said that I have, you know, tracked many disasters in the last many- Now, I feel, as I said, that I have, you know, tracked many disasters in the last twenty-five, thirty years. So I feel that a disaster is like a mini act play. There are sets, there are designs, there are people who come, play their part and go back to the backstage. The difference between the play, a normal formal play which you see on the stage and then the stage of a country or the whole universe. When disaster strikes slightly different. It becomes a mini act play because there are many players, but the players do not necessarily come at a designated time. They keep coming in whenever they feel like, with their perspectives depending on who they are and what they represent. Very interesting saying in Hindi, begani shaadi mein Abdullah divana. So you find, who is this Abdullah? Because you know, when there's a marriage procession going on, even a lot of fun festivities going on. This guy called Abdullah, he is on his scooter, he is going for something else, he is going back home and you find the people who are having fun. And he just parks his scooter, makes a little jig, goes back and thinks about, oh, he participated. So there's somebody else's problem and somebody else is getting interested. So this is what makes, you know, makes a disaster, you know, transdisciplinary and very complex. The, the narrative, the discourse can come from anywhere, which could be absolutely, we have nothing to do with what is being discussed. But then that becomes part of the ecosystem, the communication ecosystems. And you find, as I said, the social media, especially Twitter, has become playground for fighting the worst battle, deriding adversaries. Now you find very interesting that ultimately the politicians also think that their constituencies are the people at large. So when the opposition is questioning in democracy, every right to ask question, you may be asking the most silliest questions. Questions are never silliest answers could be. So, but you find that politicians are not replying to them, but they are replying via Twitter or via social media. Directly talking to the constituencies matter. There's a new kind of narrative you have seen the last couple of decades, it never used to be. It's because now there's a, there's access to social media and that is for the, when it's election time, when it's a disaster, you find. The politicals, they are directly talking to people. If there's a, I remember whenever there was a low pricing of petrol, you know, a few years ago. So the minister in charge of petrol would say on Twitter before even it could reach the media. Now you find for the last almost two weeks, every day there's a hike, but nobody's talking about it. You just get to know through the media that the price has hiked. Right or wrong, I'm not saying anything, I'd like you people to make your own decisions and make your own judgments. But then things have changed and media has made us change our perspective also of our behavior. Even media behavior interfacing with our publics or stakeholders, next please. So every disaster has a unique narrative, a unique story to unfold. But public opinion swings like a pendulum when human life is involved. People are still playing on the game that we are only fifteen thousand people are dead, we have one point three billion, why even one night is important? Someone has said that when many people die, we are statistics, but when one person die in a family is a tragedy. So you have to think about it. Therefore, the stories of human grit, compassion, determination, besides death, suffering and separation. Receive empathy from the readers and viewers. Media becomes a kind of, a courtier of disasters. Media becomes the writer, the first rough draft in history. Like it or not, but once something comes in media, especially black and white, so it becomes a first rough draft in history. So media is extremely important, the earlier we understand, the better it is, like them or not. You cannot reach out your constituencies unless you need the community vehicle of the media, next please. So let's deconstruct COVID nineteen crisis from various perspectives. The supply and demand side of communication, as I spoke to you in my opening remarks, next please. Let's look at the supply side, the government, the opposition. PM Modi had addressed the nation a number of times. The first time, I think was nineteenth of March, the second was twenty-fourth March, nineteenth March was that the twenty-first is going to be. The Janta curfew, and he said that how people react would decide their course of action. When he appeared on the twenty-fourth March, he said that this showed that whenever you are faced with a problem, we fight together. And two weeks, or you know, two weeks or three weeks, two weeks, you know, to start it was. Launch term in the curfew, I won't say curfew, lockdown was announced. From twelve o'clock onwards, this conference happens at eight o'clock in four hours time. So which means a communication vacuum for media at large. In this four hours time, people who are homes and huts and roof on their head. Probably started thinking how we are going to curtail or going out. And then there was also a kind of appeal to the people, the factories and the people who employ people. Not, you know, fire the people, give them the salary, there was appeal from the politicals that, you know, don't charge them rent, you can. Charge them later, but do you think it's easier to do it? The people might do it for a couple of days, a couple of weeks, but continuously the people were supposed to be benevolent. Do they have that kind of money and what did we see? Just the next day, of course, there are many community kitchens, a lot of efforts were put in by both the state governments and the central government. But the whole, the magnitude of the crisis was so big. Nobody thought that India, carors of people are migrant, labors who come to the aspirational cities. And those cities became the tormentors because the people they were staying, the landlords told them to, you know. Clear their luggage and they get going. The people where they were working, some of them were a little benevolent, might have paid them for a couple of weeks or one week salary. They told them, we can't afford you, obviously they too may have their own problems. So imagine while the lockdown was on, these people, there was no public transport system, they started walking. Imagine walking for fifteen hundred kilometers, two thousand kilometers, sitting at home in our cushy rooms and air conditioning rooms. You can't even think what they were going through. So when you're in a crisis, what do you do? You want to go back to family. This is something which we should have thought about. But then, you know, when we, whenever there's a crisis, we generally think that, you know, we become so, you know, and grasp the crisis. The reason generally takes a backseat, that we are distressed, everybody's distressed, I won't say all the people who lost their, you know, jobs or the roof on their head. Even the people among the bureaucracy, among the politicals, people who decide, who criticize. They all, we all, you know, become irrational because the crisis is so big enough. And it went on for weeks together and then it's not that government was not doing, they were doing as best as they can. And you found that from the supply side, information was also pouring in. We had everyday conference, you know, at the media center in Delhi. March was good, almost every day, April was also, almost every, I think twenty-four times, March was fourteen or fifteen times. Then it was May, it was only eight times, whereas June first, we only one time, I think now it's one or two more, when the June is about to end. What does that mean? What cue does it, does it give to you, those who track crisis? Which means when the crisis was deepening, when the numbers was going up, communication was less. What it should be in normal circumstances, when the problem is more, you should communicate more. So what happens when you create a communication vacuum? It could be good intention because you do not want to scare people, but what happens to the ground reality? When people are gasping for breath, when people are problem, they are getting to the, to the labs, to the hospitals, the, the truth is right there. So what happens when there's less information from the supply side? So the media which, you know, sustains on information, information, more information. So it's tries to get information from all sources, some of the sources are not official. And it's generally at a risk and cost of the people on the supply side. So this is a small truth, this is small common sense, people who are handling disasters have to understand. Because the job of the business of media is to write, is to give information through various media. So they are going to get information somehow, bet, borrow, steal, that is how every journalist does. So don't create a communication vacuum, we saw there was a communication vacuum many times, next please. Get the next one here. When you look at, so I'll put opposition, both supply side also and, you know, on demand side also. Supply side, then they are giving their information because as political parties, they are also doing their bit, trying to do their bit. Whether they were successful or not, it's a different matter. So demand side of information is that media was seeking information from the supply side. Opposition, opposition parties are asking questions. And it's not that opposition always asks right questions, sometimes they want to be in the forefront, they want to be counted. As doing something in a disaster, so you have to understand that. In the PR parlance, we generally teach and say that, don't look at media or opposition on your report card. When you're handling a crisis, when you're handling a crisis, the only thing you have to be focused, your reflexes have to be sharp. Forget about the ecosystem who is saying what. If you can understand this small fact, everything else would, you know, be put in place. If you are able to handle your crisis well, then take your time, once the crisis is over, to see how you handle it. Don't depend on outsiders or the research agencies to tell you how did you handle it. It's a common sense, you know how did you handle it? And then there are people, now you find that media has become so interactive, non-stop, they are in touch with the. While the live program is going on, people are also asking, you know, questions and they're telling them, the government is not listening, please pass it on to the government. They are, you know, reflecting Twitter, you know, issues on the mainstream media. So there's a huge convergence now, they are not various platforms now. What is happening in social media is, you can see in classic media and all in all, in a crisis situation. Information from myriad sources becomes so complex, the web of communication that may confuse. Or scare people more than enlighten them, so that is what it is in some total. And even as of now, since we do not know when it's going to, when the COVID is going to go away. We have to be very careful, even as consumers of information, what sources do we go? To get the right information, next please. Now, how did the various actors play their role? Okay, so let us look at it, next please. The government, so it is on record that the PM hell, as I said, this is very important, that you have to partner with. Media and various sources of information. It's not one person's job, only government's job to handle a disaster. Communities, media, the different, you know, organizations, the government have to put their, you know, might together. To handle a crisis, so it is, I was reading somewhere that on the twenty-fourth March itself before. He announced the lockdown, PM had a video conference with about twenty editors and owners. Seeking support and partnership on dealing with the problem together. And they will talk about team India working in unison. We found that he was talking to the state governments, but mostly it was, you know, central centric in the beginning. But as a numbers search, less information came by. In the first few weeks during the lockdown, no information on migrant population, what we were getting, we were getting only from the media. And you found all of a sudden, you know, when a crisis happens, obviously every institution has its own DNA. So media's DNA is to inform people. And I won't say there's a huge polarization in the media, not all media might be doing an excellent job. But then they are there, that they have their constituency, people are watching them. So you found that the, all the information on the migrant population wasn't coming from the government per se, we should have. But from the media, so obviously there were different perspectives. And you found within the media also huge polarization, huge on, on political ideology. And one thing which I'll come little later, is a lot of, lot of, you know, you find picking up one media against the other. Which has become a new norm in media watch in this country. NDMA, now the government announced that COVID nineteen will be put under National Disaster Management Act two thousand five. And there's a national disaster management authority. So they were conspicuous by their absence everywhere except now. The last few days you find, NDMA is holding some meetings with the chief minister, home minister, et cetera. To handle the problem in Delhi, otherwise all these three months, we did not find in the press conference. Which were being held live at the media center, no representative from NDMA. In contrast, you found when the cyclone Ampan came to the Bay of Bengal in Orissa and in West Bengal on twentieth May. The briefing was done only by the NDMA head, because they were the authority in charge. And the, and I remember media, because since we had a pre-borning about this disaster, now you know disasters can be. Can be foretold, so media raised questions about, because lots of people had to be evacuated from their places. To safe places, so the questions were asked and then the observations were there. Not only, I would say, the media, but also many NGO, CSO, academia. That now what happens to social distancing and the vulnerable groups like children, sick, people with disabilities. So when media ask these questions, these are on behalf of the people. Because media is supposed to be the voice of the people, it may not be, it's a different matter sometimes. But then all these things, I'm sure were taken care of. And every disaster leaves a huge track of further suffering and you're seeing that. Nobody is talking about West Bengal or Orissa now, but the truth is that, you know, I think the CM was saying. More than one lakh crore worth of loss, damage of property has happened in West Bengal and must be equal or a little less in Orissa also. So the problem with media is that, as I said in the beginning, that they are event driven and episodic. So you don't find much stories, rather no stories on the West Bengal, how they're coping with the disaster. So in that in a way suits the government because nobody's asking questions, what next? It's only the academics and some people within the media, I won't say not, the entire media is not doing. At least the local media, the West Bengal, Orissa media, you do find, you know, papers written by them. You do find issues in the public domain. So you find that, you know, unfortunately, a public health emergency has turned into political issue. It should never be like that, but it is. You just, and it generally happens, a disaster of this kind of magnitude happens, next. So let's look at the public information campaigns. As the coronavirus began spreading tentacles, the authorities defined many media to spread information both in paid and unpaid categories. There was celebrity endorsement, Amitabh Bachchan has been, has been requested, he has been giving those ads on coronavirus. And a lot of ads have been issued in both, you know, by state governments and by central government on Corona per se. And you find that fifty-eight percent is a BAK data, Nielsen data. The fifty-eight percent Corona ads were released by the state governments and forty-two percent the state government. One of the most effective one I thought was the, the, the call on the telephone. Whenever you are calling somebody, there's a caller, you know, ad, first it told you about social distancing. And wearing of mask, washing of hands over a period of time. It's also talking about how to respect the coronavirus. We must, you know, respect people, pay allegiance to them who are saving their lives and that's a recent change. But you find coronavirus was also an opportunity for, a lot of chief ministers do their public relations as. You see in Chhattisgarh, Kerala, Rajasthan, MP, all these chief ministers have also come in as both in print media. As well as in television and also digital space. One way it is that we're the same what they're doing, two is that they also, you know, that also supports media, that which is very important. And also they are able to, to, to talk to their constituencies, next. And then in brand campaigns, BAK has shared, this is Broadcasting Audience Research Council. Has shared that the quantum of social advertising surged, was already branded during the Corona times. There are more social advertising now and most. There are more social advertising now and mostly that's to do with coronavirus than brand ads. Brands played on health, safety themes. One did not see any out-of-box idea in brand campaigns. Because the economy took a low turn, so you found that most of these brands stopped advertising. So to my mind, that's not a good idea for two things. One is that, these issues, one could be from their perspective, that when the crisis of this magnitude is there. People are distressed, they can't be showing happy-go-lucky people in their brand ads. Two, it costs a lot of money to advertise in the mainstream media. And three, they would, the advertising spent is vis-à-vis the sales you do. So the sales have taken a, you know, a beating. So obviously, they would not like to spend. But my counter argument on that is that, these things are, you know, passing phases. I remember when nine eleven happened in the USA. So this was a very different kind of disaster, man-made disaster, you know, terrorist activity. So most of the brands in America suspended advertising for a couple of weeks. Because they didn't want to be seen as indifferent to the tragedy of the people, you know, tragedy of the country and the people who died. Because in advertising, you don't see people are morose, you see people who are happy with, you know, showing their teeth. And they are enjoying, they are having fun. So they gave about a two weeks break. Time Magazine, which came with a special issue after nine eleven, was without any advertising. But that was an issue, the timeliness was very important, but you know, after that, everything was fine. Now this COVID nineteen, as we have been saying that we have to learn to live with it, it's not that kind of a crisis. So media has to, not media, the corporate sector has to understand. Because advertising agencies can only, you know, make the creatives and give you the plan, do the strategy and release the ad. The ultimate onus lies on the big business houses, who have been spending close to one lakh crores on advertising every year. For seventy, eighty thousand crores is the, the media billing. And when you put production in the celebrity endorsement, it comes about a one lakh crore. So imagine these three months with almost no brand, almost, some are doing it, no advertising. What impact does it have on the vehicles of advertising? And what are the vehicles? The media. Advertising is a mediated communication, you need a vehicle. Now imagine an advertising subsidizes. You know, entertainment and news for an average person. So the newspapers are not able to. You know, publish many pages, some are on the verge of closing down the smaller and the medium newspapers. One is that, it's a double whammy for them. Mostly people have stopped subscribing for the fear of getting the coronavirus in the. On the pages of the newspapers. Two, they're almost nil ad revenue. How will they sustain? Media is also an industry. If the Bhavanas have a problem, media too have a problem. If the MSME has a problem, big business have a problem, banks have a problem, media is the fourth arm in a democracy. In fact, the extent of democracy is gauged by the extent of freedom or independent media a society has. We can't let it go like that. So the onus or the responsibility is on the government to come with a package to support media. Give them ads, Corona S in newspapers everywhere. And look, look at more in a more focused manner. The onus is also on the corporate sector, must support them. Imagine tomorrow got purpose, that lot of, you know, small and medium newspapers are born away, there are very few newspapers. So how are you going to reach your message to the tier two, tier three, tier four towns or villages? Lot of sustenance of this FMCG projects come from the, from the rural hinterland. You can't forget them in, in adversity. So it's high time you must do, you know, I would say wide-angle thinking and not a thinking which is focused. As, as we, when we shoot, you know. So you have to have a wide angle thinking on this. Two, we've seen that even on the electronic media, where the, the viewership has surged. Many force, they aren't getting many ads. So somehow, I don't know who is deciding in the corporate sector. They should have somebody who is not involved in the money, you know, front, you know. Money game, somebody who can give them a wider perspective to tell them that. The, even the disaster time, the crisis time, you have to, it's not business as usual. You have to think beyond, beyond the obvious. And I feel that, I hope that corporate sector, somebody is giving them this advice. Not to do with advertising, as they're almost done it in the last three months. Because it's a simple economics, they shall have to suffer in the long run also. Amol Bishaw was an exception with his tongue-in-cheek ads. It has been giving, but sometimes it has also been getting. A bit of flashing on these, the social media, when they said Wuhan Siliai. So Wuhan Siliai, it was a pun, whether you brought the virus from Wuhan. Or you brought the students from Wuhan. So you found lot of trolling there, you found lot of criticism on the. Social media, some people liked it also. Sonam Mahapatra, who is the singer, pop singer, she thought it was in bad taste. McCann World Agency created a black paper ad for educating children, very nice ad, how to tell children to wash their hands as a mother. In some countries for the teacher telling them, because the black paper was shown as the coronavirus that when you put your hand without. Without the soap, it will remain there for the moment you, you know, your hand is soaked. So that black paper goes to the bottom. It's a very nice way of conception of the, the, of the ad. And I've seen it running in many countries. And in, I think in, was it in South Korea or Vietnam? I think Vietnam, very interesting ad, you know, with Karikacha, which was shown here also, which has been now, is being. Translated many, in many languages across the countries, showing this simple way of saying how to, you know. How to push away coronavirus from your life. Next please. Next, Krishna.
Media.
Sorry.
Media, this slide is about media.
There's one more slide. I have the copy, okay. The way forward, okay, now the media. Now, you find that a lot of inter-critiquing of media. Modi media versus journalism. So it took me some time, what is Modi media, then I realized it's a watchdog versus laptop. Not a good term to use, but you find these, you know, terms are being popularized. And this fills the mainstream media narrative, continues to be there. Which is in a way, we can say independent media versus embedded journalism, is what we talked about openly. One popular anchor said in the prime time news on twenty-third June, journalists have replaced propagandists. It's very harsh, but then, you know, when the tough is the going, you know, when the, it is a tough going. So you find that such things, such expressions also are invented or are discovered. So whether we agree or not, but this narrative is also there. Stories of dozens of scribes, sub, notices. Lots of FIRs, intimidations surfaced. They're saying that at least three dozen journalists have been, you know. I wouldn't call it intimidation from my perspective, but they've been questioned or quote-unquote for giving fake news. As for BBC report, about hundred journalists were infected with COVID on their line of duty. I think Mumbai was almost fifty-five. So one thing, you know, whenever something comes in the media, the, the good thing is that a government which is democratic. Which is open, should take a cue, if this happens in some other state. So we found in Delhi. The journalists from Delhi were asked to come for a free COVID test. I think about more than five hundred journalists volunteered. Just for two to three of a positive, which was a very good sign. So media, government, the authorities, they all have to work in tandem. Because they have a common goal. This is what one has to understand in a disaster. Next. News channels mostly loud, noisy, irreverent and judgmental. You know, when you open a news channel. It is like a cacophony. Very few, it's a very solemn, you go to any other country, watch their channels. You're talking about the crisis, why should your tone and tenor should be so loud? You can't be settling scores with your adversaries, adversaries on the, on the channel. Because it's a very solemn kind of an issue, people are dying where thousands in many countries, the hundreds in our country. So you can't be raising your voice, why can't you be solemn as, as a news anchor? A public emergency, as I said, is solemn time, but many did not, you know, treat it with solemnity. They held trials, raised Islamophobia and accusations openly. Print media, the silent sufferer. A subscription went down to the fear of paper carrying the virus. The ad revenue also went down. In fact, ET has put the last economic times, it put the last rupees two thousand crores a month. So maybe already three, four months, so imagine how would they be surviving. News of journalists losing jobs have also surfaced. INS, the Indian Newspaper Society, has written to the government to support the media industry. In fact, many international media organizations have also written to stakeholders to support the journalists. Because journalists, media, a very important part of the whole ecosystem. And interestingly, when you look at the sociology or the ownership patterns of the media. Most of the media are owned by big business houses. So vote stops them from supporting it. And media may not always give you the revenue which you always might be getting it. These are different times, difficult times. So media has to be given all the support. Next please. So how have you managed the communication between the demand and the supply side? I would say on the expected lines. In every disaster, trust levels are always very low. Unfortunate, but that's the truth. So low trust levels, fake news galore, arrest intimidation of journalists alleged. Stories brought by media bring action on the part of government. It's a long way to go as a virus is not waiting too, too soon. As for the prediction, therefore, lessons learned need to be followed. We are still in the midst of the crisis, it was like, I won't say in midterm appraisal, it has just started. So the lessons learned have to be followed so that we don't make those small mistakes into big blunders. And ultimately, who suffers? When there are accusations, when the trust levels are low, you know, it's when the two elephants fight. Is the grass which suffers. That is what one has to, to understand. Even the media has a lot of introspection. Where are they accessing their information from? And sometimes, in order not to create panic. How much to say, what to say, how to say is very important. And they have to work in tandem with the government. But if there are gaps, they must show. You said in the beginning that Amresh has worked in Amritbaza Patrika. I tell you something very interesting which happened eighty years ago, when there was a Bengal famine in nineteen forty-three. So in West Bengal, there were only two newspapers, big newspapers, Statesman, which was owned by British. And Amritbaza Patrika, which is owned by Ghosh family. So these two papers were briefed by the government. To say that, don't create panic, don't say there's a rise, you know, scarcity. And just play with it so that people don't get panicked. So these, both the people, Statesman, I think, had a British editor. And yet, they had a, you know, local editor. So they thought what the government was saying was, had a lot of sense, a lot of common sense. So they started pointing that line, till they got to know when the journalists went to the grassroots and found. How people were dying, how people dying of starvation. So they left all that and started giving stories, graphics, with pictures. Which turned the whole paradigm. And the British government was, even the, the crown wasn't aware about that. Because then, media does not write the truth. Imagine what happens for the communities per se. So they changed it and they started writing the two stories. In fact, one of the edits headline, Amritbaza Patrika was. The seventeen seventy-four famine in the world, we said, it's already upon us. So imagine they had all the courage, if media is not courageous, it's better not to have a media. So media has to be truthful, has to be courageous. And media is not a monolith. You'll always have all kinds of media, the good media and the bad media, the embedded media, the independent media. That is what makes a democracy functional, that's what makes, you know, makes things going. But we should have the common sense. The, as academics, as people in, in charge of communication, to understand. To read between the lines, when media writes and see, and you know, and clear the, you know, the truth from the lies. Which I'm sure people like us can do, but even, I would say, a lot of, lot of credit to the common men. Who are a lot of common sense, they also see, you know, the implants, they also see the truth or the lack of truth behind things. Next please. So what's the way forward? The crisis can be turned into an opportunity. If the intent and public interest are symmetrically aligned. The intention and the public interest. They have to symmetrically align. You can't be intending something and you don't have public interest in your mind, no. It doesn't, ultimately, truth has this uncanny character of surfacing somehow. So that's very important for anyone who's handling crisis to understand that truth surfaces ultimately. Prime Minister Modi has been talking about turning crisis into an opportunity. He's also been talking about Swarup Alambi and Atmunirbhah Bharat. I think great vision. But how do we bring it down to the implementation level? I personally feel, this is my personal view. That India resides in villages, almost seventy, sixty, seventy percent population lives in villages. And cities for these people are very aspirational. That's why I was hearing in one of FM's, you know. Press conference that overall, there are about eight million migrant population in the country at different points of time. So even if you say there are two to three million who actively would like to come to their aspirational places to earn living. Because they may have the, the fields, they may have, but they did not have liquid cash. So they need that liquid cash and all life, aspiration life, so they come to cities to earn that cash which they use here and also send it, send it back. So somehow, I've been feeling this idea in my mind, that when you see those most, if you see, if you look at the public sector. That's the only sector which has gone to the length and breadth of the country in the last seventy years. They have their big, you know, infrastructure projects everywhere in the country. But if you look at the private sector, which is much bigger than the public sector now. They are mostly into service or huge infrastructure industry, which are not labor intensive. They are automated. I think it's high time, we all have, if the country lives, only then we live. If our people live, only then we live. This is very important, all of these big businessmen must do an introspection. Because money has value only when it reaches the right people. You don't eat diamonds and pearls in your lunch and dinner. Money has no value if it is somewhere in your, you know, in your, you know, banks. It has value when it is spent wisely. So I feel that the big business, the PM can call upon the big business houses, big businessmen. CSR is one thing, but start thinking of starting small, little factories in the villages. In the mountainous regions wherever, we have huge amount of fruits, which sometimes you find gets rotten. Because of transportation issues. We had this time, you've seen what is happening to different kinds of vegetables and fruits. So small little, you know, industries can be set up, five crores, ten crores, which is nothing for them. And you identify the places and have local, you know, talent. Imagine the government of India and the, and then Mr. Modi has spent a lot of time on Skill India. So a lot of people were skilled into these things. So in case, these, these small factories and hubs can be created in all those villages. We have, or four like villages we have, at least some places. And number one, these people will not come in most parts to the, to the cities. Where they don't live, they are on the fringes, they don't, they don't live very comfortable lives. So if some of them start working there and they're labor intensive, because every big business house is scared of labor unrest. Start changing your paradigm, start changing your law, the best, but to see that. You start making labor in, set in, you know, intensive industries, it gives them employment, it gives them. And imagine, it's a win-win situation, when these companies have these small industries. So you find that product. have these small industries so you find that product can be used there and the towns around there so they get the employment they get the disposable income to buy things of uh you know their everyday use and aspirational products the companies who invest in them you you get your money so it's a kind of win-win situation so maybe somebody some I'm not an economist mine is just a commonsensical uh perspective but the Niti Aio and the PM they should think about requesting advising this big businessman to rural chalo be vocal about rural this is Bharat chhodo anvaren abhkanachay rural chalo the moment these companies do you know just talking about it is very important he has given us an idea that ideas terminated but now how do we take it for this very important and government can also do in public sector can also start doing some ancillary uh industries I remember when Tata had set up uh disco more than a hundred years ago in Jamshedkurd so what Tata did that that time even the word CSR was not known they would talk about community outreach so Aditya Puram was uh was you know uh made I think it was created which made ancillary things for the disco which means a one full village or many villages were uh giving uh you know uh stuff which disco required and the local I R Ts were giving them the the wear turtle in a huge country the huge country has huge blessings as well as huge problems also so we have to think through economics and social together now so I feel the way forward is that uh we go beyond communication and start working at grassroots level it was so unfortunate to see those optics for the office what we saw the mine and labor some of them dying some of them going without food a young girl fifteen year old cycling her way from Delhi or some Gansiar to uh to Bihar but how many people are like that she you know hit the international headlines but imagine the the suffering behind that if that can stir if that that does not stir us as a nation as people nothing else will so it's high time that we change our thinking and start working towards the people who are responsible for the lifestyle the urban lifestyle now the mares don't have a job but we are scared getting them home they are going back to uh to their respective places we are not buying things because we think that we'll get infection but the people on the fringes they are the ones who are doing the lifestyle they are the ones who run our economy really so if we don't care for them nobody else will so government is very socialistic in this perspective and we should all think our minds together in this direction
ma'am we are running short of time also
just 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 get to the last slide so remember I think half is I'll just read it from here remember there are no adversaries in a disaster situation except the disaster itself that's the biggest adversary and needs to be neutralized together so in a disaster situation disaster is the adversary and not various stakeholders so we should start stop fighting among ourselves and don't look at each other for giving us a report card that is not required just do a job honestly and we shall win this coronavirus war also thank you so much for giving the opportunity teachers are compulsive speakers they don't look at the watch yeah
thank you so much ma'am there's so many insights that we have come to know from this session was truly truly knowledgeable lot of things that uh we uh could make out I mean and from a very distinct uh different perspective that we got to see the whole scenario of covid nineteen and for me personally it was like going back to old times again and I was feeling nostalgic also now uh now I request uh Sushwita ma'am or H O D being in media school to share her thoughts and give a word of thanks to the to this session
hello thank you uh ma'am Jashi ma'am for delivering such a wonderful talk it was so enlightening actually I believe that everybody would have benefited by her talk I thank you ma'am and thank you everybody for their participation and for contributing to making this conference of fertile while ex uh experience experience and exercise thank you ma'am
thank you so much
wonderful exercise yes
we are also open to some question and answers so I'll just check the chat box if we have any questions
yeah by the time I need one minute to say something by the time you look into the chat box I think there are no questions as I have looked into but then I have to say this that it was such a wonderful talk I have I mean obviously I will not say that I had not imagined but then uh the kind of stuff which was there that was really enlightening particularly two important points which I struck my mind one that nobody is talking about the 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 problems of the media organizations in general and the problems of journalists in particular uh I have been talking about this but not that way the way you did the whole research and came out with the very hard facts and I was looking into the distribution uh of the money which was being done by the government which the FM was announced announcing in four or five uh press conferences regarding twenty lakh crore package and that was announced by the government but I did not find any mention of the media organizations or the journalists included that is very very shocking and this is despite the fact that everybody knows what is happening in media it's not that that the government is not knowing and despite knowing everything that the the predictable condition in almost all new all newspapers and all news channels people are being thrown out of jobs in hundreds I mean even two hundred three hundred people are being retrenched by media organizations and as uh I just remember you gave the complete statistics we cannot even blame the media houses uh because if they are under such severe financial crisis how they will be able to pay the salaries to the employees but then here is where the the role of the government comes uh as you rightly pointed out that if the media is gone then the what will be left in the country but media in any case has to survive media has to be protected but it's very unfortunate that the government is not paying any attention to this aspect as you rightly pointed out the number of infections which happened uh of the journalists and not only that I mean this has been the condition for the last fifty sixty years and nobody cares what the journalist but then this is the time where in the journalists are in more trouble I mean there is no insurance of the journalists in most of the media organizations uh most of the newspapers and news channels with exceptions obviously they do not own uh they are journalists if there is a crisis so they simply throw away uh everybody I mean newspapers like Hindu are retreating the people and there is no debate on this issue uh obviously channels and newspapers don't debate this then who else would debate on this the common people are not aware as to what is happening in the media they are simply bothered that in the evening they have to sit in the drying room and they have to watch television but what is happening with the journalists are the common people are not knowing so who will look after the the journalists then so this is and you raised this point very emphatically I am really grateful for this because at heart I am also a journalist who have practiced journalism for fifteen twenty years before coming to uh media this is really a very unfortunate thing we all have to think on this issue and the final thing that you said when you were talking about the resolution that is what's the way out and the I even never think that way as to what will be the solution when everybody has gone to the villages back all these migrant labors so what will happen to the industries and the manufacturing units uh which are located in big cities if if these migrant labor they do not come back so even if a manufacturing unit is open there will be no workers available and the output the industrial output will not be there so the the your suggestion is wonderful some argument wherein you said that the government should come for forwards setting up asking the industry to setting up the industries in uh semi urban areas or in the remote this rural areas wherever it's possible but if that happens that will basically not only uh solve the problem at the moment but in a long term also that will be a very good solution because it's not that that this kind of catastrophes happening for the for any time any certain can happen so we have to be ready for future as well either this continues this covid nineteen continues for long or another uh this coronavirus is that nobody knows about the future so we have to be well prepared and this is in fact the role of the governance in fact what has happened in this covid nineteen crisis the governance has failed completely they have not risen up to the occasion wherein they can take the step which they are expected to take but then still there is time if there could be some rectification some improvement in the policies and the execution then lot can be done I think whatever you said and in your presentation and uh uh any anybody can understand how much time you would have devoted in researching all this and putting everything in place in the P P T if it is the all this stuff can be uh can be provided to the policymakers wherein they can get some clues some ideas to what kind of improvement or the rectification is possible in the policies because government sometimes I feel is completely clueless they do not know what to do next so they are simply experimenting and if something uh something succeed and they feel that they are going on the right path so uh whatever you suggested I think you should provide all that uh to to whatever connections you have you have good connections so that it can given insight uh to the policymakers to the governors to set the things right and to uh to to do the damage control exercise whatever damage has happened has happened but now onwards if things improves that will be the biggest contribution of you uh in this area thank you
ma'am there is a question in the chat box this question is coming from Munisa Kadri and she's saying that has the focus of brands shifted from profit related marketing and product promotion to more about brand image and focus on long term relationship
I couldn't follow voice is not very clear
the question is uh she's talking about the focus of brands have uh have they shifted from profit related marketing and product promotion to more about the image and building long term relationships
well it works both ways uh it's a corporate brand has image obviously you see that when Tata says for any product a product from Tata's so which means it has a long equity with it so even if they launch a new product they don't have to do so much of brand advertising because it comes with the guarantee of Tata's I don't think it's a wrong uh thing to say because uh both ways uh advertising builds a brand but when they do uh the image of the corporate brand per se that builds equity and most of these big conglomerates are doing both so I don't think can be one at the cost of other they both have to survive together
thank you ma'am I think that's the only question that we could get on the chat box so now uh the end is just the beginning with these thoughts I now request all the participants and even those who have not yet participated to please follow us on our social media handles like Facebook and Instagram pages for the latest topics and those who have missed out the conversations all the sessions are available on icon three Facebook page and icon three playlist on YouTube B M E channel I can really also has a webpage B M E or A C dot I N where one can get all the relevant information and resources available please follow us and hit links for icon three books video playlist other reference material I can see proceedings souvenir and everything that you need with it I can uh I'll take this opportunity to thank Ritwik sir and Sumant sir for all the support for technical as well as otherwise to make this session a grand success thank you ma'am for being us thank you sir thank you
thank you